Okay, good afternoon everyone. And can I welcome everyone to today's Cabinet meeting of Suffolk County Council. This meeting is being webcast live and be available to watch subsequently on the County Council's website. Members of the public and press may also record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, provided you courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance in line with the council's published guidance. Can I just ask everyone just to check your mobile phones are switched off or on silent? And same if you can turn the volume down on the laptops as well, please. We're not expecting a fire drill in the event of an alarm sounding, please leave the chamber by following the fire exit signs. The rear of the chamber and fire evacuation instructions can be found on page four of the agenda. First item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Do we have any, please?
We have received no apologies for absence from Cabinet members.
Love it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item is Agenda item two, decorations of interest and dispensations. I'd just like to remind you that members of the council have received written notification from the monitoring officer confirming that you have been granted a standing dispensation for a period of four years. This is to allow you to speak and/or vote on matters relating to devolution and local government reorganisation, where you may otherwise have an interest arising from a receipt of members' allowance as a member of Suffolk County Council, or in a dual role as member of Ipswich Borough Council, Mid Suffolk and Baver District Council, West Suffolk Council and East Suffolk Council. Apart from that, do any councillors have any interest to declare in respect to today's agenda? None received, thank you. Agenda item number three is minutes of the previous meeting. These are laid out on the papers starting on page, I believe, fifteen? Nope, can't find them. Starting on page five and running through to page eleven. Are you happy that I sign those as a true reflection of the meeting? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. I'll do that after the meeting. Public questions is the next agenda item. Do we have any public questions, please?
No public questions were received.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item five is the standing item, the update from scrutiny and audit. councillor Joanna Spicer is here with us today as chairman of the Audit Committee and will provide the scrutiny update, which has also been tabled and is uploaded on the website. Councillor Spicer.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, you should have got, I hope you've had a chance to look at, the update to Cabinet today. There's only one item, which is actually the Education and Children's Services Scrutiny Committee, which was held on the 11th of September. And I see the vice-chairman is here, actually. Thank you, Ash, for that. So if you'd like to just look through, the recommendations would be helpful. But can I start off by saying, I think I speak for all members of the committee that we found this a very, not just interesting, because we're not here just to find things interesting, but a very valuable and useful overview of the adoption and fostering services. And we'd had an opportunity to talk to staff over the, in sessions here the week before. And I think the committee would want me to thank the witnesses, and in particular councillor Bobby Bennett. And we had witnesses who were adoptive parents and foster parents as well, which was added to the meeting. You'll see the recommendations to Cabinet are in paragraph C. I would draw attention to a couple. We were very keen that we continue, that, well, in fact, that the service re-energises its strategies around retention of foster carers, as well as the important business of constantly trying to recruit new foster carers. And the other thing to draw your attention to is the second one, where we made a particular amount of interest and hope is reflected in this recommendation about the importance of the support to kinship foster carers. I'm sure everybody here will see paragraph three, which is about how much we recompense our foster carers. And the Cabinet member agreed that they should be lobbying to government. I think those are the key things, Chairman, of the recommendations, which carry on over the page, but the key things to pick out.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Bennett, you should come in.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you to all of the scrutiny members on that day. It was, as you say, a very valuable scrutiny, looking at all our adoption and fostering services, but like you say, shining the light also on kinship carers, who quite often come into looking after children without much prior notice. It's a very different role to being a foster carer or an adopter. And it was brilliant to be able to look at all roots that our children have looked after with such thoroughness. And I think I would like to also thank again the people who came and spoke and shared some of their stories, because these are real stories about real people and there's a lot of emotion involved. So very grateful that they felt they were able to come and talk to us. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And obviously, we will be taking those recommendations away, and as councillor Bennett said, we will be looking at them in greater detail. So thank you very much, and thank you for reporting back on that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Agenda item six, the Devolution Priority Programme, consent to laying of the draft statutory instrument to establish the Norfolk and Suffolk Combined County Authority, or Suffolk and Norfolk Combined County Authority. But I'll hand over now to councillor Rout to take us through that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We know Suffolk as a county of great contrasts, but a single and unique binding identity. We are a mix of large urban areas, market towns, coastal communities and rural villages, but a county with a big role to play in keeping the country fed and watered, and a county which is also at the cutting edge of internationally significant industries, including ports, digital technology, energy and manufacturing. However, earlier I described Suffolk and Norfolk as a devolution desert. Now with the establishment of an MCCA and alongside local government reorganisation, we have a rare opportunity to change that. As one of six areas on the Devolution Priority Programme, Suffolk, working closely with Norfolk, has been recognised for its ambition and capacity to deliver. Now we have had these devolution opportunities before, but this time we really do have the chance and indeed the ambition to drive forward real change. Establishing the combined county authority and the directly elected mayor gives new opportunity for Suffolk businesses, communities to fulfil what we know to be their considerable potential. We know from those that have benefited from devolution before us, such as the West Midlands, Greater Manchester, Liverpool and the North East, that the funding and powers devolved expand over time, along with the ability to influence government. In the future, Suffolk and Norfolk would be able to access multi-year, cross-government funding that would enhance the investment fund and enable better tailoring of that money to benefit local needs and address opportunities. Powering, feeding, connecting the UK, Suffolk along with Norfolk has a significant economic contribution to make, and devolution will enhance that. A new mayor would be an advocate for all of Suffolk, someone with the ability to speak directly to government ministers, and someone with a seat at the table of the Council of Nations and Regions. As we make clear in our One Suffolk Business case, working with a new mayor, Suffolk as a single unitary council will remove competition between places and enable the identification of clear and coherent investment priorities to maximise the benefits of devolution. The new mayor would also have a key role to play in another part of my responsibilities, ENCIPS. Suffolk has a unique national contribution to make to clean energy, with approximately 10% of the UK's nationally significant infrastructure projects, including the confirmed construction of Saiswell C. The County Council is already focused on championing, supporting and convening local communities feeling the greatest impact of large infrastructure schemes. The new mayor will have a specific convening power that can facilitate key partners, such as National Grid, the Environment Agency and Natural England, to engage more readily in key developments. The mayor's role would also involve taking that strategic oversight that would ensure we avoid the lack of coordination that has historically been evident in Suffolk with our major projects. With a view across Norfolk and Suffolk, a mayor could be best placed to make decisions with the specific interests of our communities at heart. If we look at the evidence from those places that have come before us, it is clear to see that being part of a mayoral strategic authority offers huge opportunities. In Tees Valley, for example, six million pounds in funding was allocated to creating a space for up to 31 startups as part of the Hartlepool Innovation and Skills Quarter. In Sheffield, a major urban regeneration project is underway, with 12 million pounds injected into improvements in the city centre. And in South Bristol, a landmark development of 1,435 new homes has been funded at Hengrove Park, including employment, commercial units, education and community spaces. These are just a few examples of the scores from across the country, which show what can be achieved with the right oversight, the right mayor and the right ambition. So I'd ask members to think what could be achieved for our own great county if we put those things in place. However, there is clearly a great deal of work to do before the new mayor walks into their office on day one. Officers across Suffolk and Norfolk are working at pace with a joint project team stood up by the two authorities, with support from the district councils across both counties. The project team has close links with other established MCCAs, working with government departments to develop the right governance and legal frameworks. The team is focused on establishing a modest, safe and legal organisation that can facilitate the arrival of the mayor in May 2026. Government has made it clear that various existing funding streams will be diverted to the new mayor, along with new opportunities. As a new standalone organisation, the MCCA must therefore have a minimum capability and capacity for financial management and the commissioning of activity to reflect the new mayor's priorities, together with establishing the required governance, audit and scrutiny functions that councillor Spicer mentioned at our earlier meeting. Accountable to local people with leadership and contributions from councillors, elected members will have important roles in shaping the way the MCCA operates. I know there's been questions about the mayor's role, particularly in relation to how the budget will be set and how finances will be managed. I'll address this now, but ensure each year the mayor must prepare and submit a draft budget. This would detail their spending plans for the MCCA's functions and how costs would be met. If the MCCA reviews the draft budget and suggests changes, the mayor must consider them and can revise their budget accordingly. The mayor must also ensure that their budget aligns with legal requirements. Alongside managing the budget, the mayor has a number of key functions. These are broad and depend in some measure on the bill, which is making its passage through Parliament, but they include in no particular order, developing a master plan for all transport in Norfolk and Suffolk, promoting integrated networks like better links between buses, trains and cycling. The mayor will also influence rail improvements, such as network governance and station management. From 2027/28, the mayor will take control of the Adult Skills Fund, that's around 23 million pounds combined for Suffolk and Norfolk, including qualifications in English maths, digital skills and bootcamps. The mayor will also develop strategies to get more people into jobs or training, and separately will produce local growth plans, creating a plan with government, shared priorities and indeed an investment pipeline. The duties and remit of the mayor will be broad, but with the right support from the new system of unitary local government in Suffolk, I am confident that the new MCCA will be a positive step forward for our county. To sum up, we can see from the other mayoral authorities around the country that funding and decision-making are better aligned with local priorities rather than dictated by national policy. And as we know, devolution is a journey and more comes with time. With England's most established devolution arrangements, we've seen the funding and powers devolved from government grow significantly. The opportunities for Suffolk are far-reaching. I'd urge colleagues to support this paper today, that gives Suffolk a true seat at the table nationally and that voice that I think, Mr Chairman, we all crave. This is about more than just governance structures or funding streams, it's about giving Suffolk the tools to shape its own future. We have a chance to move from being a region on the periphery of national decision-making to one with real influence, investment and heightened vision. With unity, ambition and purpose, we can ensure that devolution delivers meaningful change, both for our communities, our economy and for generations to come. So, Mr Chairman, let's take this opportunity and step confidently into a future shaped by Suffolk, for Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, councillor Smith, you wanted to go next.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Rout. I'm going to use one or two of the same facts as councillor Rout has mentioned, but I think they're worth hearing again. And I'm going to talk about my view of the Devolution Priority Programme from the point of view of the areas of which I carry Cabinet responsibility, finance, economic development and skills, in that order. And of course, as Cabinet Member for Finance, you would naturally realise that I'm interested in the numbers. And if we agree to proceed, Suffolk and Norfolk will unlock, we know, 37.4 million pounds every year for the next 30 years. And that totals over a billion pounds of new investment in our region. And this is money we simply wouldn't see without having a directly elected mayor. And crucially, this funding gives us long-term certainty. Instead of bidding for pots in a short-term way, local leaders will be able to make strategic decisions, investing in infrastructure, housing, skills and growth on our terms, with more local control. We know that other mayoral authorities have used this money to invest in transport infrastructure in particular, but also in education and skills, tourism and economic growth. And we now have the chance to do the same. So looking at economic development, I am confident that it gives us a real opportunity to drive inclusive economic growth across the two counties. The new mayoral combined authority will set out a local growth plan, one built around the needs, the real needs and priorities of our region, together with a clear investment pipeline. Suffolk and Norfolk's existing economic strategies, developed with our business boards, gives us a strong head start. We won't be starting from scratch, another advantage. The new authority will also lead on growth hubs, allowing us to provide joined-up, consistent business support across the region, particularly valuable for our small and medium-sized enterprises. A new strategic partnership with the Department for Business and Trade will open doors to national investment opportunities. And if the proposed regional forum of elected mayors is established, we'll have a direct voice at that table on matters such as trade, investment and innovation. And we only need here to look at what Tees Valley has achieved under Ben Howson, attracting global interest in renewable energy and creating thousands of jobs. We have the potential to do the same, especially with our focus on clean energy, on agri-tech and on our digital industries. And that list doesn't even mention the crucial importance of the Port of Felixstowe to our area. The final area is on skills, and this is one of the most exciting parts of this deal, the opportunity to reshape skills and training locally. We know that from 2027, the mayor will take control of the Adult Skills Fund, giving us in collaboration the power to better shape training around local priorities, not necessarily around national templates. Now whilst final allocations are to be confirmed, the indicative allowance for Suffolk and Norfolk will be 22.5 million, I think you said nearly 23, but I'm told 22.5 million pounds each year, with the flexibility to target that money where it will have the most impact. And that means training aligned with our key growth sectors, better support for rural and coastal communities, and funding that adapts to the needs of employers and residents. We'll be able to invest in lifelong learning, improve access to training for adults and tackle Suffolk's specific skills gaps that are holding back businesses and communities. And I want just here to mention the example of the West Midlands, where they have used their devolved skills funding to boost construction, digital and clean energy skills, helping people into good, well-paid local jobs. We could and will do the same with our key sectors here in Suffolk. So Chairman, this is a deal, or this deal rather, is a real chance to shape our own future, not just in receiving funding, but in influencing the decisions that matter most to us here in Suffolk and Norfolk. It will help us build a stronger, more resilient economy, deliver better outcomes for residents and secure long-term, locally controlled investment. And I finish by encouraging my colleagues to support the motion today, so that we can move forward to the next stage and for our region, begin turning these opportunities into action.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Hoxton, you were next.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. I'll be brief, as the role of mayor will not directly affect operational delivery of adult social care in Suffolk at the moment. That said, there are several key areas where the mayor can make a meaningful difference to the lives of those receiving care and support. First, housing and homelessness. We know that our district and borough councils are struggling to meet their housing targets. This has a direct knock-on effect for people who are all, who are ready to move on from adult social care-funded accommodation into mainstream housing, but can't, simply because there aren't enough suitable homes available. The issue is particularly acute in Ipswich, East Suffolk, Mid Suffolk and Baver. Time and again, we see housing decisions that for one reason or another fail to prioritise people with learning disabilities, autism or physical disabilities, especially when they are ready to transition from supported accommodation into independent living. Of course, this will be improved once we have a One Suffolk Unitary Authority that brings together adult social care and housing, but in the meantime, anything the mayor can do to work with councils to increase housing supply will help. More homes mean more people, including those receiving care, can live well in Suffolk, in a place they can truly call home. Secondly, I welcome the mayor's likely role in overseeing public health improvements, working alongside the NHS and Health and Wellbeing Boards under the new ICB boundaries. I know I'm not breaking any confidences when I say that administering adult social care across two ICBS, which themselves are spread across two county councils, has not always been straightforward. The mayor's involvement and oversight will help smooth the transition to new regionalised ICB structures and add another welcome champion for the promotion of both good physical and mental health. Finally, I welcome the mayor's role in finding ways to boost economic growth. As part of that important aim, I hope they will focus heavily on the importance of supporting people into work, which is still the best way to alleviate poverty and avoid social isolation. Going further, Miss Chairman, I hope that whoever is elected will pay special attention to helping adults with physical and mental disabilities to better access the workforce by encouraging as many businesses and industries as possible to create roles and opportunities for people of all abilities, as I believe it is crucial that Suffolk is open and accessible to all. Of course, much will depend on the new mayor's manifesto, values and ambitions for Suffolk, but I believe the raw materials that they have to start with are county's natural beauty, historic traditions, fantastic people, enterprising businesses, diverse communities, as well as Norfolk, they are well placed to succeed. I'm happy to support the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Next one that went up was councillor Bennett.
Thank you very much. So the government has been very clear, they've said that their aim is to put people in charge of their own communities, and they have said that empowering people in places mean that the first line of delivery and accountability should be exercised by the lowest tier of government. They've also gone on to say that this means strategic authorities and local authorities become responsible for health, education, criminal justice and other services. All those things are things that are absolutely vital to children and young people's services. When you look at a child in the round, they don't just fit in into one part of that, where they, where they live, how they, how they are in their health, where they go to school. That all feeds into how that child grows. And so my hope is that through the mayoral combined authority, this will allow us to make services such as health, education and social care more integrated, so we can look at the whole child and offer that support in a much more joined-up way, both strategically and operationally. And particularly important to me are the items around policing and how this will feed into the way we safeguard children and young people, and transport, quite literally how communities are connected. Invited to this is the funding that is described in the paper as dedicated, predictable and unring-fenced, which will allow us to plan for the long term. But there are still also some unknown opportunities here. We do not yet know what the full opportunities of the devolution might open up, so I'm positive about that as well. So ultimately, I think, as I said in the full council meeting, devolution gives us the opportunity to put our children and families at the heart of everything we do and do what we know works best for them.
Thanks very much. Councillor Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I think the many benefits of devolution have been widely and robustly discussed this afternoon. First, First, local decision-making works better. Who knows more about the needs of our towns, our villages, our businesses? Westminster or the people who actually live and work here. When powers over housing, transport, skills and regeneration are held locally, we can make faster, more tailored decisions that actually reflect the priorities of our communities. Second, devolution gives us the tools to invest in our future. As part of the deals proposed for Norfolk and Suffolk, or Suffolk and Norfolk, the mayor could secure hundreds of millions of pounds of long-term funding, as we've heard. That's more than four hundred and eighty million for Suffolk over the next thirty years. And third, as councillor Smith has already mentioned, we would also gain control over our skills and powers to support our education system, allowing us to shape training programmes around the real needs of the Suffolk economy, from agriculture to sustainable energy to advanced manufacturing amongst others. With education under my jurisdiction as cabinet member, I'd like to expand on the subject of skills and education now and what devolution of skills actually means in practice. And through devolution deals, combined authorities are given control over the Adult Skills Fund, as we've heard, so that they can set priorities more closely tied to local labour market needs. And this means the mayor could adapt adult learning provision to local sectors. The mayor could align with Suffolk priority industries such as digital, sustainable energy and agriculture, rather than the one size fits all national approach. It would enable our adult learning providers to deliver courses that match what employers are looking for and actually need in their areas. And this improves employability, and that's a great move for Suffolk people. And as an example, with large infrastructure or construction projects such as science will see, we could ensure that further education colleges are part of the workforce pipelines, providing skilled trades, management, safety, construction techniques and the list does go on. It also means that the mayor's office will have the speed and flexibility to respond to change. Devolution allows a training course to be introduced quicker, for example. If an emerging sector needs new skills, the local authority working with the mayor can more rapidly commission training or introduce skills, boot camps or short courses. In other parts of the country with devolution, there has been an investment in education for S E N, I touched on this in full council, for S E N students and lower skilled workers. And this is particularly important. Local oversight can increase community learning, such as support for English maths, digital skills or those with barriers, including transport childcare. And it has been shown that this raises participation from groups who might be underserved. As previously mentioned, this provides a real opportunity to improve our programme of work for those not in education, employment or training, and particularly considering our S E N young people. And as an example, in the West of England Combined Authority, as I mentioned earlier, twenty thousand pounds was spent to provide careers, support and information to young people with S E N and help schools and parents and carers with young people's journeys to work. And finally, when it comes at powers and decisions relating to adult learning, economic development and transport are local. Further education institutions can plan with more stability. And this helps with investment in facilities and staff and curriculum development. And really funny, I just wanted to share what in my mind are some strong examples of how devolution has transformed skills and education across the country. And I'll take the West Midlands Combined Authority again as an example, which has obtained a devolved adult education budget in two thousand and nineteen and secured more than seven hundred million pounds for skills and jobs. And since then, they have expanded community learning, digital including literacy and numeracy courses, and increased the proportion of people qualified to at least level three, which are qualifications which are equivalent to A levels. And that increase has been from forty-eight to fifty-nine percent in the region and thus closed the gap with the national average. And one of these investments was a new careers hub and enterprise network, which has made a positive impact through working across ninety-five schools and colleges as well as universities and other local organisations. And in Cambridge and Peterborough Combined Authority, devolution has allowed more involvement in early-stage decision-making, enabling the area to shape what further education is delivered and vastly improving the offer to young people. And finally, again, further north in the Tees Valley Combined Authority, devolution investment has included an expansion to Hartlepool Further Education College, so it can train more young people, and a new skills centre costing one point one million to improve provision for young learners in science, technology, education, engineering and maths, otherwise known as STEM. Each of these investments has been made with thorough knowledge of the opportunities and gaps in the local area, making a real difference to young people as they make important career decisions. And it provides a chance to tailor training locally, rather than rely upon generic national provision. So this is a welcomed opportunity for Suffolk's young people and in turn will lead to further growth in our county. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Who wants to go next? councillor Wiles.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And if I may, from my own portfolio, I see the safety of our communities here in Suffolk as non-negotiable. Our fire, rescue, emergency response, together with prevention and resilient services must remain at the highest standards, regardless of any governance change. I believe that the prospects of having a joint mayoral strategic authority offers this region a unique opportunity to strengthen not only what we have, but also how those protections are delivered. A few of the possible key advantages of a mayoral role would include stronger strategic coordination across counter boundaries. Because, as we all know, public protection challenges such as fires, natural disasters, major incidents, do not respect county lines. Under a combined mayoral authority, we would be better placed to align strategy, resources and response across Suffolk and Norfolk, avoiding duplication, sharing best practice and ensuring resilience benefiting the whole region. Greater capacity for investment and delivery for the long term. For example, as a mayoral authority, there is potential access to more flexible funding models. This means we could secure more stable funding for fire and rescue, prevention programmes, resilience and infrastructure. That financial flexibility helps to plan ahead, rather than operating reactively. Clear accountability. A directly elected mayor offers a visible and accountable strategic leader who can champion public protection across the region, rather than decisions being disrupted by multiple bodies. Behind the scenes, the mayor will be directly answerable to the public for how we protect our communities. Better integration with other services. Dealing with risk, prevention and emergency response increasingly requires joined up governance with planning, housing, resilience, transport and infrastructure. Under devolution powers, our housing, land acquisition and regeneration can be held by the mayoral strategic authority. Coordinating development in such a way that reduces risk and ensures the emergency services are integrated into future growth. Ability to respond flexibly to local needs. Central government is very distant. Local leadership can be more quickly adaptable to policy, invest where it matters, locally or innovative solutions tailored to our specific challenges here in Suffolk. Devolution is about making decisions over the geographical area that are best suited to local landscapes and circumstances. That responsiveness can improve prevention, community safety, resilience and means fewer delays in implementing changes. However, I appreciate that governance change can feel uncertain. The transition must be handled carefully. This must not be about dismantling our services, it should be more about strengthening them under new structures. We already have the people, the skills, the commitment and institutional memory. What changes is the way we govern and invest. As we move towards those changes, our focus remains the same, protecting communities, reducing risk, improving safety, as well as supporting each other in doing that work. Regarding public health, a new combined county authority would take on a statutory duty to improve the health of our residents and reduce health inequalities. This in addition to the duties already held by the county council. Devolution will mean health-related decisions are made by local leaders who understand our communities. A directly elected mayor will be required to consider health outcomes in all decisions, identifying opportunities and embedding public health into areas such as transport, housing, skills and economic growth. Devolution will give us the powers to tackle the wider determinants of health such as poor housing, unemployment and low skills, rather than simply dealing with those consequences. The new mayor or delegated representative would have a vital role in this, having a strong voice in shaping the leadership of our Integrated Care Board, creating improved alignment between the NHS, local government and other partners. With devolved powers, Norfolk and Suffolk public health teams will work with the mayor to support focused work on prevention to reduce health inequalities and improve population health. A mayor would provide an accountable voice for the health and wellbeing of our great region, raising its profile both locally and nationally. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Because of this and the overwhelming support in the chamber today, I will be supporting the recommendations as set out.
Thanks very much. councillor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In the full council meeting, I mentioned we're at a pivotal moment for Suffolk, and indeed we are. The creation of Suffolk and Norfolk Combined County Authority marks a new era of regional governance, promising real benefits for our communities, economy and environment. Central to this change is the devolution of transport powers to directly elected mayors, or to a directly elected mayor rather. Suffolk will benefit from a unified strategic approach to transport planning across the region. The combined authority becomes the lead local transport authority, responsible for planning, securing public transport services, managing concessionary travel and crucially pursuing bus franchising or enhanced partnerships. For Suffolk, this is a game changer. Bus franchising allows us to design services around people, delivering reliable routes, better integration with rail and cycling and a system that truly serves both towns and rural communities. As a rural county, Suffolk faces unique challenges compared to urban areas. By investing in essential routes and working closely with rural communities, we can reduce isolation, especially for the elderly, disabled and low income families. Enhanced partnerships will improve standards, accessibility and affordability. Greater Manchester's B network shows what's possible, capped fares, greener buses and better reliability. While highways maintenance remains with what we believe should be a One Suffolk Unitary Authority, strategic coordination will be led by the mayor. This ensures that Suffolk's roads are not managed in isolation, but as part of a broader, interconnected network, the mayor can pull resources, align priorities and make decisions that benefit the region. A key responsibility is the development of a local transport plan aligned with frameworks like the Spatial Development Strategy. This will support housing, employment and environmental goals, delivering smarter infrastructure and better connectivity. The mayor will also define a key route network, those vital arteries that keep our region moving. With powers over constituent transport authorities, the mayor can implement efficient, sustainable and community responsive measures to tackle congestion, improve safety and enhance freight routes. Importantly, the devolution framework removes several requirements for Secretary of State consent. This gives the mayor autonomy to implement lane rental schemes, approve highway events, convert footpaths to cycle tracks and install traffic management features without unnecessary delays. Suffolk will benefit from faster delivery and more responsive governance. Transport funding will be simplified and consolidated, reducing bureaucracy and increasing flexibility. Whether upgrading bus shelters, expanding park and ride or investing in sustainable transport, Suffolk will have a stronger voice and greater control. The combined authority will also play a formal role in strategic rail planning as Great British Railways is established. Mayors may gain statutory powers over rail governance, enabling Suffolk to influence services, station upgrades and integration with other transport modes. In housing, planning and regeneration, mayoral powers will unlock collaboration with Homes England, fast-tracking delivery tailored to Suffolk's needs. In the medium term, this means allocation of Homes England funding passing to the mayor rather than Homes England holding the purse strings. This will receive direct funding, so no more bidding international schemes. This means quicker, locally driven investment in brownfield sites, town centres and affordable homes. The development of Suffolk's strong pipeline of brownfield sites compiled and prioritised with districts will be accelerated. The power to create mayoral development corporations can drive regeneration in areas like Lowestoft, Ipswich and Great Yarmouth. The mayor can also introduce a strategic community infrastructure levy to raise funds from new developments to support strategic infrastructure delivery. And with thirty-nine billion affordable Homes Programme ahead, a mayor means Suffolk is well positioned to secure its fair share. In conclusion, the Suffolk and Norfolk Combined County Authority is not just a new administrative structure, it's a bold step towards a more connected, empowered and forward-looking Suffolk. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for that. councillor West, you were next.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'll be fairly brief because as I said earlier, my operational highways brief won't really be affected by the devolution priority programme. Operational highways will continue, well, to either sit cleanly with One Suffolk or sort of messily across multiple councils. But if we can, if I can just perhaps touch on a few points some of our colleagues have raised. And before that, I think it's critically important that we approve the paper today. The government is obviously going down the route of mayoral authorities and it's very important that Norfolk and Suffolk has the same voice that others, other areas have already got and other councils are applying for as well, because I think not approving that would see us as a really second or third rate party around the table. So in that respect, it's necessary. It brings with it more funding, as we've heard from councillor Rout and councillor Smith. The areas that I think councillor Chambers touched upon are absolutely correct, makes much more sense to have the mayoral authority directing transport planning across the area, housing as well. It will also make the funding element much more efficient, again that councillor Chambers mentioned, and give us much more clout in front of government when we're asking for even more than we've got recently. Skills and education has been spoken about, but I think again, that's an area where we, particularly with AI now challenging what have become traditional routes of further education to university, there are lots of graduates who have gone through that route, might struggle to get jobs in what they were hoping for and AI will also displace might struggle to get jobs in what they were hoping for and AI will also displace sort of more mature workers. If we can grab the skills agenda and create more apprenticeships, which I think the country's been lacking for many decades, I think that will be only to the good of the future of young people in the county. And I think having a mayoral authority will give Norfolk and Suffolk a greater chance of being able to do that with matching the skills that are needed against what is offered. My colleague councillor Hopkins Berger spoke about potential opportunities in the health and social care sector whilst maybe not coming immediately. That would certainly be something in time that would be welcome. And councillors Reid and Bennet quite rightly spoke about young people and families and community as needing to be pulled together, something which the mayoral authority would be able to lead on. So with all those points, I firmly support the recommendations that councillor Rout spoke to and happy to give it my full support.
Thanks very much. If no one else wants to come in, happy to open it up to others. councillor Stringer.
Yes, I've just got one question for councillor Chambers. I'm going to have to disappear after this because I've got another meeting across the road about planning, but I'm going to ask you a question about planning. You just suggested that the mayor will have a strategy for spatial development, for housing, economic growth, et cetera, et cetera. You also said in the previous debate how there will now be a single voice with one set of policies for where housing growth and economic growth goes. So in this new scenario, where is the local voice of neighbourhood plans?
Yeah, I think councillor Stringer, if I may just step in briefly whilst perhaps the officers behind us do some thinking as well, that we were very clear when we spoke about One Suffolk, that we would have a very strong local voice both through local planning committees and indeed the area committees that will feed into either the local plan, which would indeed be Suffolk-wide, but that does not supersede neighbourhood plans, which I would hope would continue. So I think that that strong voice would exist at a local level, but absolutely the mayor would be setting that strategic direction but not specific, it would be a sort of broad brush stroke approach, wouldn't it, in terms of strategic allocations, not the detail that one might see in a local plan which would still persist or a neighbourhood plan that would still persist. Does that make sense?
Yes, so you are saying that neighbourhood plans are in that one set of policies?
There would be a set of, there would be a set of, there would be a strong set of policies within what we're advocating for, a single unitary authority. And then there would be the strategic direction set by the mayor. I think it's the difference between strategic direction and local implementation.
And local delivery. I think my point I was making is that the mayor would be looking at the bigger picture around routes, transport routes, planning as well, obviously, for larger developments.
I'm very willing to bring in the executive director who sat behind me.
Thank you, members. So for clarity, and I think you already know this, but the mayor will have responsibility for a spatial development plan that will set the strategic direction across a range of topics but principally focused around growth and prosperity for a region and an area. It will not do site allocations and it is part of what should be considered a suite of documents that also include local plans produced by what will then be the unitary authorities and of course neighbourhood plans that set out clearly what the communities would like to see for their particular areas. That suite of plans should be read as a single policy approach for a given area.
Thank you for that. councillor Stringer, should you have a follow-up?
Very quickly, yeah. So in this scenario, so those working on neighbourhood development plans now in response to the increased housing targets of last November, should they wait for that spatial strategy from the mayor or should they get on and do their own plans?
I would say get on and get on with everything we're doing. Let's not pause, let's not wait, let's continue.
And that's very kind of you because you'll be setting it up nicely for the new one unitary. Thank you. councillor Fairclough-Mutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think from the direction of travel, my group are pleased to see that the DPP will be approved long last today. I just have two questions for councillor Rout, if I may. We've spoken a lot about the internal aspects of the new mayoral combined authority. I'd like to ask about the external impact. The mayor of the new combined authority will sit on the council of nations and regions. How do mayors interact with one another, particularly important given we have borders with the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Authority and the new Greater Essex Authority? And finally, just on a grassroots basis, what will be the constitutional arrangements for scrutiny of the new mayoral combined authority for local councillors in Norfolk and Suffolk? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fairclough-Mutton. You're quite correct that the mayors will sit on the council of nations and regions. That's an area currently that Suffolk and Norfolk lack a voice. I believe that all of the mayors interact with each other outside of that. I've been impressed to see people like Paul Bristow trying to reach out across party lines, even to the extent that his pass for the Labour Party Conference was withdrawn. But certainly he, for example, is making those efforts and I think it's incumbent on all mayors across the country to work across party lines for the betterment of their areas. That will, I'm sure, be done both formally and informally. In terms of the scrutiny function, you are absolutely right that there will be both a scrutiny committee and an audit committee for the new MCCA. I'm looking behind me just to see how that will be populated. My assumption is from elected members.
So on the second of those two questions then, yes, you will have representatives on those committees from the constituent authorities that make up the MCCA. And therefore, as a result, local authorities within Norfolk and Suffolk will be involved in the overview and scrutiny of the new mayoral authority. If I may be permitted, I'll just come back on question one as well to remind members that actually there is specific provision in the new English devolution bill around a duty upon mayors to cooperate across boundaries with each other and a reciprocal duty on them to respond to that request for cooperation, thus building in that cross-boundary requirement. That is, as I said, part of the English devolution bill that will be enacted probably summer of next year and will be immediately adopted by MCCAs across the country.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I haven't got any other hands up. I was just going to sort of pass a quick couple of comments, if I may then, before I hand back to councillor Rout. You know, we often say today's a historic day, this is a historic day. It's easy to say, but actually, I think for Suffolk County Council and for Suffolk, this is a very, very significant day. The scale and the impact of decisions we make as a cabinet is often big and significant. But there's something truly significant about the decision where we're looking at a wider potential transformative programme for 1.7 million people. And that's what we are heading to by agreeing this with Norfolk colleagues, obviously, in a week or two. So we have a very unique deal on the table, one which brings devolution with big change, sitting alongside even bigger change with local government reorganisation, which I'm really glad to say was backed so positively in this chamber just two weeks ago. But the reality before us is that if we didn't accept this deal, it would probably be done to a later date and we would be at the back of the queue. And we've covered that off quite well during the debate earlier today in full council. And I think it's only right and proper that we, as a cabinet, really look to move forward and shape our future and lead on this as we are, because this is once, you know, as we, I'm using too many cliches, but this genuinely is, you know, a very, very rare opportunity. We've tried to be in this position before and never got to a point where we really can see that the end is just in sight. That investment fund has been talked about a lot at full council today and again, it's been mentioned today. And of course, it is a lot of money, but I think we must never forget that this is an opportunity just to drive growth, economic growth, improve infrastructure, but ultimately the end goal is to improve the lives of our residents, which this will aim to do. And the government's really clear, if we want to have that opportunity and have that funding and have that ability to make a difference to our residents, the only way to do it is to go through local government reorganisation and have a mayor on board. And in the past, too often, we've bid for Suffolk and we've not had the outcomes that we really needed or wanted. And this gives us really the opportunity to get the outcomes that we all so much desire as we have seen in the West Midlands and as we've seen in Teesside. And I think it is significant that the Suffolk Business Board today, this week came out and has written a letter of support. And they really see this as a huge opportunity and it's a powerful endorsement because it allows us to really focus on that really significant investment and opportunity that this brings to our two counties. So it is definitely a huge opportunity, it's vast and it's varied, and we need to do this to make a real significant difference. So going forward, of course, whatever that new authority is or authorities, it would be really important that there is that really strong joint working with the mayor, that we pool our resources, develop strategies that will benefit our region. The government is clear, this is a starting point of further deals and it brings that opportunity. So without being too cliched, this really is a historic day and I would just like to pay credit to everyone that's been involved in getting us to this point. It's taken many weeks and months of preparation and work, working across with our colleagues in Norfolk on this particular paper. And I particularly like to thank councillor Rout and the officer team behind him who've helped deliver this today. I'll now hand back to councillor Wright to remind us what we are actually being asked to decide.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as you said, an historic day. If cabinet members could turn their attention to pages 13 and 14 of the papers and the recommendations go across both pages under item two, A, B and C, I don't propose to read them all out, you've heard quite a lot from me already today, but I think as we do hopefully endorse those, Mr. Chairman, it's important to reflect on the striking endorsement from full council that we received. I think 55 votes to just one, 98% vote in favour.
Thank you very much. Yes, as you said, there was a very strong endorsement from full council earlier particularly and also we had obviously various members who asked us to mention their names as well in support. So cabinet, are we in favour of the recommendations as laid out on page 13 and 14 of our papers? Can we have a show of hands, please? Thank you very much. That's unanimous and thank you again for all the hard work and preparation that's gone into that. So that's it, that concludes the business for today's meeting. Oh, I'm really sorry. I'm so sorry, that's wishful thinking, isn't it, clearly? Sorry, I went right to the bottom of the page too early. I'm very sorry councillor Smith, I've done that before. I can see I'm going to be told off of this now for a long time. Agenda item seven, I do apologise. And look, it's, look at the title, Get Suffolk Working. I need to get working, my brain needs to go into working mode. Get Suffolk Working, councillor Smith.
Well, Chairman, it has been a long day, hasn't it? And this is my third speech of the day, but this is an important one and on a different subject which has some things in common with what we've been talking about at both council and earlier at cabinet. Everyone who can work should have the opportunity to do so in a way that's meaningful, fulfilling and sustainable. Employment is not just about income, it's about dignity, purpose, health and connections. For our residents, it can improve both wellbeing and health and reduce social exclusion. And for our county, it strengthens both our communities and our economy. But we know that for many people in Suffolk, the path to employment is not straightforward. Health conditions, disabilities, caring responsibilities, low confidence levels, rurality or a lack of qualifications can all create complex barriers to being economically active. That is why it's important not just to create the growth and employment opportunities we're delivering through the Suffolk Economic Strategy and the work of the Suffolk Business Board, but to also look for ways to help further address causes of economic inactivity and barriers to employment so that our residents can benefit fully from the growth created. The draft Get Suffolk Working Plan in front of us is our local response to the national Get Britain Working and its ambition is to raise the employment rate to 80%. This plan has been developed in direct partnership with the Norfolk and Suffolk District of the Department for Work and Pensions and both Integrated Care Boards serving Suffolk. It's also benefited from input and consultation with other local authorities, employers, further and higher education providers and of course the voluntary sector. And this council is grateful to all of those who have contributed. Indeed, the range of organisations involved is reflective of the need for a locally coordinated response to these often complex challenges. The plan identifies the key causes and drivers of economic inactivity in Suffolk, sets out how different organisations are already responding to these challenges across the county and proposes a set of actions to be taken together to further improve our collective response. By increasing the coordination and impact of activity across the work, health and skills system in Suffolk to reduce levels of economic inactivity whilst also tackling some of the key disparities that exist between different groups, the plan will help create an inclusive talent pipeline for our businesses and positively impact the mental and physical health and wellbeing of our residents. At the centre of the plan is the launch of Connect to Work, a major new programme backed by up to nine and a half million pounds in funding from government. Over the next five years, it will support more than 2,700 Suffolk residents who face the greatest barriers to employment, including those with health conditions, disabilities and complex needs. But this plan is more than a single programme. It sets out a whole system approach that strengthens collaboration, improves data sharing, aligns funding and ensures that every part of the system is working together to support people into work and help them stay there. Our ambitions in the plan are clear: to ensure we match the national target of an 80% employment rate alongside an 80% economic activity rate, to halt the rise in health-related economic inactivity and to close the gaps where there are disparities in employment outcomes for women, for our young people and for our disabled residents. This is a long-term plan, one that will need to evolve in line with changes to both the needs of our residents and the local government landscape. But delivery starts today with a shared focus on making Suffolk a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive through good work. This plan will help to make that possible. Colleagues are asked to agree and approve the key content as set out in the cabinet report, so skillfully written by the handbeater that the officer behind me, Michael Gray. And this includes ambitions, aims and governance arrangements set out in some detail in the plan. And chairman, it also gives those who have perhaps lacked hope and ambition the confidence to tackle life's difficulties through these new initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Open it up to cabinet colleagues. councillor Hotson-Berg, you were first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Chair of the Adult Skills and Supported Employment Board, I'm aware of the power that adult learning has to change lives and make a real difference. that adult learning has to change lives and make a real difference to individuals, families and communities. It can stimulate ambition and give people the confidence, skills and knowledge they need to secure jobs, advance in their careers and lead fulfilling lives. At the same time, it helps ensure that our economy has the skilled workforce it needs to grow and flourish. It plays a key role in addressing some of Suffolk's biggest challenges and barriers to growth, such as increasing the skill levels of our ageing workforce, raising qualification and productivity levels and helping areas of low social mobility. By doing so, it supports some of Suffolk County Council's key strategic objectives, promoting the health and wellbeing of our residents and strengthening our local economy. I am therefore pleased to see the role of adult learning and education in addressing economic inactivity and unemployment recognised in the Get Suffolk Working Plan. Given that thirty five percent of people that are economically inactive and long term sick or disabled have no qualifications and that an almost equally high proportion of our adult learners, over twenty seven percent, are those who consider themselves to have a learning disability, disability or a health problem, it is clear to see the integral role that adult learning can play in progressing adults towards and into work. As detailed in the plan, expanding the remit and expanding the membership of the Suffolk Adult Learning Board to become the Adult Skills and Supported Employment Board will bring together perspective and activities from across economic growth, skills, education, health, adult social care and DWP and therefore thereby creating a more integrated approach to lifelong learning. I look forward to chairing this new board and overseeing both the continued work of Suffolk Adult Learning Service in conjunction with the delivery of both the Connect to Work Supported Employment Programme and the wider Get Suffolk Working Plan. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Chenchy.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wanted to add a bit from my expertise of working at Suffolk New College for a couple of years with apprenticeships and also trying to get people back to work that were older, especially women who had had children and wanted to go back to work. I think eighty percent is not that ambitious, it's seventy five percent now, but it's a starting point and I really like this document. I think, I mean, over twenty percent are inactive. And what I found was that it was about confidence. So I'd like to see the one-to-one coaching that is not just about, here's a job, this is what you could do, these are some qualifications that you need. It is about taking away their anxiety. And this doesn't necessarily mean people who are, you know, suffering really badly from mental issues. This is about people that are perfectly capable of working but are scared stiff and they haven't been in the work programmes for long, they don't understand technology, they're just so scared. And I came across this with young people too. So the apprenticeships were overhauled by the coalition government to such an extent that it was excellent and the industry themselves developed those courses. So they're there, but what I found was trying to connect them with employers was down to their lack of confidence. And I had a bunch of NEATs, I had sixteen potential NEATs and did a really intensive confidence coaching with them and I got nine of them into jobs. And that was a higher rate than is normal across the country. And I'm, I'm not saying this to blow my own trumpet, I'm saying it was because I narrowed it down to that confidence coaching that they needed and it helped them to develop being able to get out there and go to interviews and turn up for things that have been done. So I really want to see an emphasis on that, that's the fact. So for me, it's aspiration, confidence and easy access. And if we can do that, we will be helping a lot more people. And then I'd like to see the target become eighty five percent, not just eighty. This is a really, really important thing that we can do for Suffolk. And I think this is an excellent document and a really good start.
Thank you. Councillor Bennet.
Thank you very much. This is an incredibly thorough document and I'm looking forward to supporting it shortly. It's supporting people of, of any age, but this will surprise you, but I want to just focus on what we can do for young people and making sure we give them the right options and opportunities to set them up with the skills that they need. Because we know that there is strong evidence that being in work improves health and wellbeing and helps prevent social exclusion. And our economy also depends on a strong skilled workforce for it to grow and thrive. And supporting young people into work at the earliest opportunities does set them up with those skills for life. And we want to give more young people the chance and choice to learn and take their first steps into their career. Now, when we talk about NEAT, those that are not in employment, education or training in Suffolk, a small proportion of our young children are not in employment, education or training, but we know the percentage is much higher when it comes to the cohorts of our most vulnerable children. And we want that number to be as low as it can be and empower our young children to be engaged in positive activities, which is why it's vital that we offer as much support as we can to, to young people, particularly our most vulnerable young people at this crucial age. And you will know that we already offer a, a lot of support in terms of one-to-one support, group work and re-engagement programmes. But our partnership is key and I'm, I'm really excited to see what, what is going to come from this, this piece of work. And whilst, whilst I, I noticed that care leavers is, is mentioned in here as one of the priorities and so I am going to do a little plug for the family business. You will all be familiar with it, it's our county council initiative, innovative employment model, providing care leavers with employment opportunities. And we do this as behaving as if our care leavers are our own children, by being their champions and using our network to open doors to opportunities they might not otherwise had. Since its launch in twenty twenty three, it's grown with more and more employers coming on board. It's not just about the work, but the Skills for Life boot camps that the care leavers are able to attend as well, help equip them with all the skills they need for, for independent living. Little plug there for that, but looking forward to, to supporting this document. It's a really good piece of work.
Very much. Anyone else who should come in, happy to open it up. To anyone else that wishes to come in? No? Okay. So councillor Smith, can you just remind cabinet what we're being asked to decide today?
Yes, and I'm very grateful for the supportive comments made by colleagues. But we are being, if we turn to page thirty one of our papers, we are being asked first to agree and approve the key content of the draft Get Suffolk Working Plan and also to agree to delegate authority to the Executive Director of Growth, Highways and Infrastructure in consultation and agreement with the Get Suffolk Working Partnership Board to make non-material changes prior to final publication of the plan and to develop future iterations of the plan in alignment with the issues identified in the Get Britain Working White Paper.
Thank you very much. Cabinet, are we in favour of that recommendation? Can we have a show of hands, please? Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, for the second time, I'd like to thank everyone. And that does conclude the business for today's meeting. But thank you, it's been, it's been a busy day, but we've achieved a lot and we've done some really great things today in, in what we've taken through full council and cabinet. So thank you everyone and enjoy the evening.